This library was dedicated, and they gave us pictures as we spoke that day. It was amazing to look how I looked thirty years ago. But he was even more fun because he was skinny as a rail and had hair that whipped past his shoulders. We both enjoyed it. I attended the Goodwill Metro Center grand opening. They have hired over forty people to come to that store. Brand-new jobs, additional jobs. And this morning I had the honor of installing the last residential electronic water meter. Staff has installed four hundred and forty thousand water meters. The entire city, every resident proper, has been converted. So they have a much more efficient service, and they did an excellent job. They did it all in ten years, so I was very proud of staff and how they did that. So I want to thank them. And to remind everyone, the District One breakfast is this Friday at seven-thirty, Metro Center. And our guest speaker will be Mayor Stanton. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Is there any other... Councilwoman Stark?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, since our last policy, I had the chance to attend the Desert Horizon Precinct Coffee with a Cop on May seventeenth, and it was at the breakfast joint. It was actually in your district, Jim. It's a pretty good restaurant.
It's in my district. It goes without saying.
There you go. And I also was invited to speak at the North Mountain Village Planning Committee on May seventeenth as well, to give an update on what's happening in District Three. And then upcoming, I'm gonna...I love these Coffees with a Cop so much. I'm gonna attend another one. I'm gonna go to the Black Mountain Coffee with a Cop this Thursday at eight-thirty at Times Square Restaurant, which is at seven-one-eight East Union Hills Drive. I think that's in your district too, right? I think Black Mountain likes you.
This thing's in District Two.
Anyway, and then I want to join everyone to come to the Phoenix District Three Community Chat. It's gonna be held May thirty-first at eight AM at the Thunderbird Arts Center at eleven-oh-six East Grovers, again, in Jim's district. There's a theme starting here. Maybe we need some better, more fun places in District Three. And so in that case, I really... I really want to encourage any new businesses or any expanding businesses in Phoenix District Three to please let me know about you, because I'd love to showcase you, whether it's in our newsletter or any way we can help you on Facebook. We want to really do...we really do want to promote our businesses in District Three. So getting back to the community chat, though, we are gonna have Inger Erickson there, the Director of the City Parks and Recreation, to talk about the power of parks, making your neighborhood a better place to live, visit, and play. So hopefully everyone can join us for that event. And then lastly, Black Mountain Community Alliance, which is the Black Mountain Precincts Group, is holding their last meeting before the summer, I believe, and it's on June fourteenth at Deer Valley Community Center. They always have a great turnout, and so anyone that's interested in what they do, I really encourage you to attend. They usually start at six PM. That's all I have.
Very much. Additional comments by members of the City Council? Councilman DeCiccio, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Just last week, we learned that the city of Phoenix was gonna increase its debt on its pension obligations, or it was gonna be part of a proposal. What I'd like to do, and I've got some documentation in my office that shows that as early as, even the beginning of this year, this was...this was a discussion. I'd like to put in a public information request for all documents, records, all, everything related to that, that topic with PSPRS and anyone else that we might have. I'd like to get down to figure out, you know, when we knew about it and when this discussion really started happening. I had the fortune that, you know, I got to sit down with the mayor of Paradise Valley this last week. And just to give you a tale of two different cities that are occurring out there, we have Paradise Valley, City of Chandler. Paradise Valley's gonna pay down their pension debt in three years. Three years. They made a commitment. They found a way to structure their internal organization, and they said in three years they're going to pay it off. The City of Chandler is also gonna be paying down over a hundred million dollars over a period of time as well. Everybody's paying down their debt. One of the proposals that's gonna be coming in front of the city of Phoenix in the next...hopefully we'll find out what...when. I'd like to get an idea when that's gonna be. But it's also...it's going to be to increase the debt. So while you have other organizations, other municipalities decreasing their debt, the city of Phoenix, in one of their proposals, has to be adopted by council, I understand that, is gonna be actually looking at increasing its debt. And I hope we take heed and understand what happens to people that increase their debt. It becomes unmanageable at times. I mean, we could always talk about what it's like to have a mortgage and a loan on a home, but it's not like that. When you have a debt, if you want to create assurances to those individuals that have their pensions, you've gotta pay it down. When you're paying down between seven-and-a-half and eight percent on that rate, you're literally paying... and you're adding that rate at seven-and-a-half or eight percent, depending on what it is that we would be increasing it to, that's a huge interest rate. Huge interest rate. Those are the things that in a business community, you pay those things down, and then things that are lower interest rate, then you can...you can find ways to make those work. Thank you, Mayor.
Very much. Other members of the council? Councilman Malkowski, please.
Thank you, Mayor. My thoughts and prayers are out there for the victims and family members of the tragedy that happened this weekend, and we just want to make sure that everybody keeps the families in their prayers. Also, I want to invite everyone out to the Star Spangled Celebration, which will be held this Friday at Caesar Chavez Park from five o'clock to nine o'clock. It's a great celebration to honor all of our fallen police officers and firefighters. We'll be having a candlelight celebration, firework, works, food, live music, low-rider display, all kinds of activities for the kids and the whole family. So come on out and learn about all those great men that have given their lives for our community. Also, if you drive down Baseline Road from Thirty-Fifth Avenue to Fifty-First Avenue, or out here in Washington from Seventh Street to about Seventh Avenue, you'll see our Heroes Lane. You have these seven-foot banners on the streetlights with those fallen police officers and firefighters. There's also a website, www.fenixheroes.org, where you can learn a little bit about each of those officers and keep that legacy alive. We have some of the schools that are actually taking field trips out and walking the Heroes Lane with their students and learning more about the great police officers and firefighters that have given the ultimate sacrifice. We also want to thank the Phoenix IDA. We presented a check to the Autobahn of Arizona for their River Pathways Program that serves over a thousand children, Central Phoenix and South Phoenix high school students. I also want to thank Saint Mary's High School. They gave me a tour of their high school, and also they're celebrating the hundredth anniversary this year. So go Knights. I know that Laura and I are graduates from Saint Mary's, so we'll be supporting Saint Mary's Knights. Also, thanks to all those individuals, the two-hundred-and-twenty-six soccer teams that participated in the Big Sink with a Mile Fiesta that we had out in the West Sports Complex. Turned out to be great. Over twenty thousand people were out there. It was incredible. Food vendors, entertainment, and a great soccer game...tournament that was out there. And also last, but not least, out there in Levine, I know that council member, Diego, is myself represent the Levine area. We have the Levine baseball, and they had their final ceremonies this Saturday, and turned out really great. Just really want to thank all those volunteers, all those parents that helped to teach and also coach all those baseball leagues and softball leagues that we have out there in Levine. That's it, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Other members of the council? Comments? Vice Mayor.
Good afternoon. As stated earlier, the tragedy in Manchester, you know, all our hearts go out to the families and friends of the victims and the unspeakable terrorist act in the UK last night. But violence in any form has no place in our society, and so I really...my heart, as long as all of our colleagues are there with them and they are in our prayers. In addition, I had a great experience on Friday, and I want to thank the Equal Opportunity Department for hosting a brown bag. In particular, it was talking about the refugee experience. The Syrian community spoke about their experience and how they were relocated and what happened in the refugee camps and what...a woman in particular spoke about how she was shot at and what it meant for her to protect her family. So I really appreciate the Equal Opportunity Department for hosting the brown bag. After that, what happened is there was a bake sale, and the Syrian women, the way they support themselves is by having a bake sale, and that's how they bring income into the family. And so I want to thank everybody in the city that supported the bake sale and also listened to the experience. And Sky Harbor Economic Impact Report came out last week. The aviation department announced that Sky Harbor's economic impact has increased by thirty-five percent since 2011. According to the ASU and WP Carey School of Business Study, the airport now has a total economic impact of more than thirty-eight billion per year. They support two-hundred-and-sixty-nine jobs in the region with an annual payroll of more than thirteen billion dollars. So as we can see, Sky Harbor is our gateway to Phoenix, and it's great to see that we are a strong economic engine. LISC tomorrow night will present Happy City at the Buze Center for Law and Society at ASU Downtown Campus. They will be hosting Charles Montgomery, an award-winning writer and urbanist, who will be talking about helping areas develop healthier neighborhoods and cities. He'll also be focusing on how urban design, well-being, social connections, and place-marking... placemaking will help drive economic development and encourage prosperity within our area. So if you're interested, please call LISC. Space is limited. And then I would like to wish everybody a happy and safe Memorial Day coming up this weekend. Thanks to all the men and women who have served in the armed forces and given the ultimate sacrifice for our country and for the freedom we all enjoy, and too often, we take it for granted. So this weekend, take a moment to reflect and thank those that have served. And of course, it's graduation season, and what's exciting about graduation, because you guys are gonna laugh at this, we have graduations for, and I want to congratulate those families, for pre-K, kinder, eighth grade, high school, obviously, community college and the university. So everybody should be celebrating this season across our great city, and want to thank all those that have taken their schooling and education to the next level. So just want to leave you with that. So thank you very much for listening.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor, for the thoughtful comments. Any other members of the council? Comments at this time? All right, let's move forward with our agenda. Now on our agenda, is there...let's see. Is there consent agenda?
Mayor, there's not a consent agenda today.
All right, how about executive session? Call for executive session?
Mayor, in accordance with the properly posted notice and agenda, I move that the city council pursuant to Arizona Revised Statutes, Section thirty-eight dash four-three-one-point-zero-two-point-A, meet in executive session on Tuesday, June thirteenth, 2017, at one PM in the East Conference Room, twelfth floor of the Phoenix City Hall, two-hundred West Washington Street, Phoenix, Arizona.
Is there a motion? Is there a second? There's a second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Next, Mr. City Manager, do you have any updates besides the budget item, which will be here in just a moment?
Mayor, I just would like to recognize, excuse me, the fact that in the last couple weeks, the city of Phoenix had its credit ratings reviewed by our rating agencies, and it is a measure of the city's financial stability and wherewithal, and as a result of that, we got, for the first time, a rating from Fitch's, which gave us the second highest rating, a double-A-one, which is consistent with our S&amp;P rating of double-A-plus. And Moody's both affirmed our general obligation bond rating of double-A-one and upgraded our excise tax rating by one notch. And they particularly cited the strength of our economy, the strong financial management at the city, and the diversification of our economy, which I think is a testament to the efforts of the council to move beyond a real estate-based economy into more and diverse economies. And so we've seen that pay off now in a credit rating from Moody's and Fitch's. I want to thank Denise Olson, our CFO, and her staff, Jeff Barton, B&amp;R and their staff, but mostly thank you all for your leadership in that that has paid off in this way. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilman?
Thank you. I agree and echo those thanks. It was interesting to read the information from the ratings agency, and they specifically called out all of the technology businesses that are coming to our community. So I want to say thank you to Paul Blue, Chris Mackey, and the staff at CED for their great work. It was wonderful that they recognized our city staff on that particular important item.
Thank you very much. City Manager, anything else?
No, sir.
All right, so now we'll move on to item number one on today's agenda. Item number one is the decision of the City Council as it relates to the 2017-18 budget for the city of Phoenix. This has been presented to us numerous times. Mr. Barton, our Budget Director, has come to the table. Anything new or different, or you want to do a more of a thorough review of the budget before we see if there's a motion on it?
Mayor, we do have a couple slides. We'll...at a minimum, you have the slides in front of you. We're experiencing some projector issues, so it may be...if it works, it may be a little duller than usual. If not, we'll just go off of what...Kelly's wrestling with it over there. We'll just go off of what's in front of you. As you said, Mayor, this is the approval of the city's proposed budget. Two weeks ago, we presented a proposed budget that reflected feedback from the public hearings held during April. Over the last two weeks, we got some additional feedback from council members, it's contained in your packet, about a couple of changes to the budget. Those have been incorporated, and so Jeff Barton will quickly describe in the four slides in front of you what we have here today and request your approval.
Mayor, members of the council, good afternoon. And as City Manager mentioned, I'll go really quickly through this, because most of this is exactly the same as we discussed just two weeks ago. So in large part, the budget as we are describing today is what we discussed two weeks ago. There are a few changes, and those changes are really reflected in three particular items, and I'll walk you through that. But to get there first, I want to...I want you to orient yourself again. We started the trial budget. We had a reserve, a set aside of about six-hundred-and-forty-one thousand dollars. Based on some work, some additional analysis that we performed, we added an additional sixty-six thousand dollars, which brought us up to about seven-hundred-and-seven thousand dollars in that set aside. As we proposed just two weeks ago, we proposed that we would take twenty thousand dollars of that funding and utilize it for arts grants, specifically youth grants programming in the arts area. We also were gonna recommend to you fifteen thousand dollars in additional funding for library, electronic...oh, there we're...we're back on. Okay, so again, we started last...two weeks ago with twenty thousand dollars in additional funding for arts grants, specifically in the areas of youth. We added fifteen thousand dollars, we proposed adding fifteen thousand dollars for online library materials, and also ten thousand dollars additional funding for arts grants maintenance. The changes, so based on some feedback and some discussion that we had it last week at two weeks ago council meeting, we're making these changes. So initially, initially, we were proposing about twenty-five thousand dollars additional funding for CAS. We are now taking that up to thirty-seven thousand dollars. So that's an increase of about two thousand...of twelve thousand dollars. That takes CAS funding in the general fund up to about eight-hundred-and-three thousand dollars. That's...that's the highest level we've had in quite some time for CAS support. We're also recommending that we add one-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars in additional funding to the City Clerk Department to enhance voter turnout. What we will be doing here is the City Clerk Department will be sending out cards to all city of Phoenix residents with the hope that they would want to add their names to the peal, the permanent early voting list. The hope there is that we will enhance voter turnout, and so we'll be using that money to do that. And then finally, the reserve or the set aside that we've been talking about, which was, as of two weeks ago, six-hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand dollars, because of the additional one-hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand dollars that we're adding here, we are now reserving about five-hundred thousand dollars of funding for next fiscal year, fiscal year eighteen-nineteen's budget process. So that really concludes the changes. So it's really just those three items that we see bulleted there. So additional twelve thousand for CAS, one-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars for voter turnout, and a reserve set aside of about five-hundred thousand dollars. So we're here today seeking your approval of the City Manager's proposed budget, which allows us to then continue the steps that we have to do, which I'll get to in just a few seconds. But again, we have a balanced budget. Again, as we discussed last week, that balanced budget is reflected on the screen, resources and revenues, resources and expenses being balanced at one-point-two-seven-seven billion dollars. Next year's budget is roughly fifty-six million dollars or fifty-five million dollars more than this year's budget. That's largely driven by pension, as we've discussed in the past. But today's action, what we're asking for you today is to adopt the City Manager's proposed budget. That allows us to comply with all state statutes and city charter provisions relative to the legal adoption process as well as the legal publication process. So we'll ask for your approval today. We'll come back two more times for the adoption of the budget process on June seventh and June twenty-first, and then we come back to you on July sixth for the adoption of the property tax. And that concludes our presentation.
Thank you very much, Mr. Barton. I'll now turn to a member of the council, see if there's a motion, and see if we get a second, and then there's some citizen comments, and then we'll turn to the council for any comments they may have if there is a motion on the floor. Is there a motion on item number one?
Mayor, I'll make the motion to approve the budget as proposed.
There's a motion to approve? Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. I'll now turn to members of the public to see if they have testimony on the motion to approve. Mr. Craig Trippken, representing CAS, followed by Mr. Bill Shepherd.
I can be very brief. Thank you for your support of our important service. Thank you.
Thank you very much, but the vote hasn't happened yet. Mr. Shepherd.
Good morning, or good afternoon, Mayor. Members of the council, my name is Bill Shepherd. I live at seventy-seven East Missouri in Phoenix, and I too support this budget because of the additional funding for the arts grants program and also the additional funding of arts maintenance. Thank you. I urge your support.
Thank you very much, Mr. Shepherd. Those only cards I have is anyone here in the audience wishing to provide testimony on the proposed budget? All right, if not, I'll turn it to members of the council. Are there any comments by members of this council? Councilman DeCiccio, please.
Can't pass up the opportunity to talk about the budget. We know that next year, we're going to have a fiscal crisis hit the city of Phoenix. I believe we're probably one of the...one of the only cities in the entire valley that's going to have this happen. It could be upwards of fifty-three million. Can you tell us what we expect to have next year?
Your question, what we expect to have...
What we are anticipating for next year's budget.
As we do our longer-term forecast, obviously, you look here at what you're estimating for next year.
Sure. So our five-year forecast suggested that if nothing was done, we could be looking at between forty...
Six.
Forty-three and sixty-four. Forty-three and sixty-four million dollar deficit for eighteen-nineteen. Again, that's if we did nothing.
And so what are we doing with this budget? I mean, this is the perfect time to start planning ahead. What's being done in this budget to address the problems for next year?
So this budget adds very minimal programs, less than two million dollars. It sets aside some money to begin for next year, and really sets us up to, as I've said before, we're gonna work over the summer as staff to identify any areas of potential savings and identify options to the council for eighteen-nineteen involving programs, costs, or revenues. And that's really an issue...I'm sorry, that's a...that's a process that we'll want to start in the fall with the council, so we're starting early next year.
And in that process that you're going to be starting, are we going to be...I've been talking about this since 2010, and I know I'm not in the majority on the council on this, but it's so logical to do. Are we looking at doing any type of strategic planning where we rank-order functions of government, city of Phoenix, from most critical to least critical? Are we gonna be doing any rank-ordering?
Mayor, Councilman DeCiccio, in the past, we had, many years ago, we had the council do some rank-ordering. We could certainly go back to that practice if that's the choice of the council. But the budget you receive from the city manager is, in effect, a prioritized list of programs, and so absent further direction from the council on that, what you'll get from the management...from management next year will be a budget that is the priorities that management sees.
So basically landscaping would be the same priority as policing?
Well, some landscaping is in the budget, and a whole bunch of policing is in the budget. So the...but the police department is clearly the number-one priority, as it represents almost fifty percent of our general fund budget. Landscaping is maybe a million dollars, so it's like one-tenth of one percent of the budget. So in that terms, it's a prioritization. But certainly, as if we get to where we need to reduce the budget next year, that exercise involving the council could include prioritization by council members, for sure.
Well, I want to make sure that we understand what you're saying when you say by prioritization by council members. I remember what that used to be like. It used to be basically a staff-driven, where you'd come together and you'd rank-order certain functions. What I'm asking for is a lot more detailed, a lot more specific than that, because that is the best way you're gonna get out of...and I believe that there's a structural deficit here, and it's been proven year after year after year. And until we do some sort of prioritization from city staff, you have the capability of doing that. No one person up here can go through that budget and do the things that you can do because you have the staff to do that. But you literally have to look at what would be the most priority, highest priority function of government that we want to deliver in services to the least. So that way, if we're gonna be locate...looking for forty-three million dollars or sixty-four million dollars, we know where to focus on. We know...I mean, I don't consider policing and landscaping to be on the same level.
I don't either. That's why they're not funded at the same level.
No, I know, and that's why. When you're saying that everything's the same high-level priority, it may not necessarily be into the rank-order.
I didn't say everything's the same high-level priority. There...in the budget, five-hundred million for police is not the same as one million dollar for landscaping.
Well, in any respect, that's just, you know, it's a number that you're throwing out there. What I'm saying is we have functions of government here. It was done. Raytheon did it many years ago. They were able to pull themselves out of a financial crisis. Other companies have been doing this. It's not that complicated. It does require difficult decision-making. It does require, and I don't think it's that difficult, I think it's pretty simple, but some may find it more difficult, depending on their constituencies. But it allows you to focus on those core priorities of government that we should be delivering those types of services, and possibly even increasing some of those functions of government. So I would be one of those that would think it'd be better for us to add more police officers in there. Until we go through that process, it's hard to vote on any of these budgets. It's hard to even consider doing a debt transfer or increasing the debt in one area until you take those steps necessary, showing the public that you've done all that you can first before you're taking more than you need. You shouldn't be taking any more than you need when you don't need to do that. So if it's not a part of that, which I, you know, I haven't seen it happen yet, and I'm hoping that it would, but I guess I'm a very optimistic guy. I hope that those things would happen.
Well, Mayor, Councilman DeCiccio, so our budget process really sets that up. So at the very beginning, we lay out, and it's online, a list of the four-hundred-and-some programs of the city in cost. They're there, and they're available. Then the manager presents a budget which places those programs in the context of the resources we have available. As we've had in the past, if there is a shortage of resources, then the manager will bring forward a prioritized list of programs to reduce or revenue to increase. And that is really the...you described really the process that we have here in terms of arriving at a budget that balances everything we hear from the community that they desire with the amount of resources that they have said that they're willing to pay. And that...we will go through that exact same process next year. If there's a desire to put into it a council prioritization of some kind, I'm absolutely happy to do that under the direction of the full council. I wouldn't expect any one council member to be able to do that, as no one staff member could do that either. But there are certainly processes that would engage the council in that, because ultimately the priorities are the council's, not the staff's. And that's what the budget would reflect.
Well, and to that respect as well, it's the priorities are the public's, you know, and we're supposed to be representing their viewpoint on that.
U.S. Representatives of the public.
And it varies because we represent different areas of the city here. So again, I mean, I'd like us to do that. I would appreciate us being able to find a way to do that. I think it'd be a significant change in the way we are structured here at the city, and it requires us to really evaluate pretty much every single function that we do and job responsibility. You know, I'm gonna contend that when you have increasing revenues that we do in the city of Phoenix, I mean, they are increasing every year. Is this the highest revenue year we've ever had in the city of Phoenix?
This is the highest revenue year we've had in the city of Phoenix. It's also outpaced by the Public Safety Pension Increase. So yes, as Mr. Barton said, our revenues went up fifty-six...fifty-five million dollars. Our Public Safety Pensions in the general fund alone went up fifty-eight million dollars. So really, in effect, we are...we are shrinking the size of government outside of pension pretty significantly.
I understand, and the fact of the matter is pensions are a problem. Without a doubt that they're a problem, they're gonna continue to be a problem. And then that will bring back the whole idea of increasing the debt by another billion-and-a-half dollars, because what that does is it makes everybody else responsible for the actions of today, moving down their line. So that'll be another debate we'll have, I guess, when that proposal does come forward. But again, it's gonna come down to this. I mean, there should be no reason why the city... I mean, there, there should be no reason why the city of Phoenix, the size that we are right now, has the type of deficit that it has. There shouldn't be any reason that, I believe it's the only city in the entire valley that's having this. So, it tells me that there's two problems. One, you definitely have a pension problem, and I think that the public as a whole understands that. The second part of this is that there's a structural deficit here in the city of Phoenix. I know staff is constantly saying that it isn't. It is. When you run into a deficit year after year, it's a problem. If you look at the way it was handled, what, back in 2010, when I was here, they basically did it across the board, it's pretty draconian cut. Again, you know, people did what they had to do at the time. That doesn't look like prioritization. For instance, I mean, you know, we could have kept more police officers if we would have done something else. We could have, you know, had the public safety part of it in place, had we done something else. So, again, it goes down to, it requires a, even in the budget that's full of priorities based on, or based by the amount of monies that are allocated to it, it's critical that even in that type of budget, we look at what's the most important to the least important, not just by an allocation of dollars, but by a function of what it is. I mean, we do this in our homes. We literally do this in our homes. We make decisions. If you run into a financial problem in your home, you make a decision whether you're going to go eat pizza tonight, or you're going to go eat somewhere else, or you're going to eat at home. It's as simple as that. And I'm just asking that the city move in that direction, otherwise, the city's going to constantly face these problems year after year after year. I've written a paper on this, and what's causing a lot of this problem. It took me a while to figure it out. Took me literally a few years to figure it out and put this paper together in a year, but it literally walks people through why this is going to happen, and it's going to continually happen until not just Phoenix, it's going to be all government across the country gets their act together and starts looking at these ways of prioritization. You have to do that, otherwise, you're never going to be able to succeed. Thanks a lot, Mayor.
All right, thank you very much, Councilman DeCiccio. Councilman Nowakowski.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I'd like to look at the allocations for the Human Services Campus. I know that the Human Services campuses are on my, in District 7, and it's right on the border of District 8. And one of the things that we get complaints on a daily basis is just the whole cleanliness from that whole couple of blocks. And I have pictures of where I just drove by and just took pictures from my iPhones, if y'all like to look at them. But I'd like to see some of that money going into just cleaning up that neighborhood, so when people are driving to work, when people are parking in front of their businesses, that they come to a nice, clean sidewalk streets, and that, that we as the city of Phoenix provide that. I know right now that we provide cleaning, I think we clean the streets every Wednesday, and we have Mo Garcia, I mean, Mo, I don't know if, Gaiego, if you can come up here and just tell us a little bit of what you actually provide in, in cleaning up around the Human Service Center. Gaiego.
Mayor Deanna Johnovich, our deputy city manager, and Mo Gaiegos, who is our Human Services Director, who has worked with the Human Services Campus, is available.
Thank you very much. That's great. So, I don't know who's going to, who's best to answer the councilman's question?
Yes, Councilman DeCiccio, Mayor, members of the council. Yes, councilmen, we've provided some information previously to you in your office, but the city does many different kinds of things around the campus. With the streets departments, we have different kinds of containers that we've tried to put there in strategic locations, listening to the providers at the, at the area. We also have, as you indicated, Streets Department that does cleaning. Once a week, that cleans the area, and we increase that twice a week during the holidays. We have Public Works Department that is delivering and different containers and providing that collection service once a week as well. We also have special cleanup efforts that we do with Neighborhood Services and other volunteers in the area. We have engagement that we do with Police Department and our caseworkers once a week as well, in terms of the folks that are outside the campus. So, those are just some of the things that we are doing and continue to do. We work closely with the campus providers, but they're, and we're working with the Human Services Campus as an entire entity with regards to their plans in the future, and trying to do more of cleaning in the area as well.
For that reason, I think that we should really look at redirecting some of that, just to actually keep that neighborhood surrounding the campus nice and clean, especially our city streets and our sidewalks. People are just walking, there's human waste, there's all kinds of shopping carts and all kinds of things that, as the pictures show. And I know that I receive many calls every Monday and Tuesday, and then Wednesday kind of slows down, Thursday slows down, but it starts to pick up on Friday. I'm pretty sure Councilmember Gaiegos probably gets the same types of phone calls. And I just really want to figure out a way where we can actually help some of those individuals that happen to live around the campus to make sure that their streets and sidewalks are, are taken care of.
All right, thank you very much. Vice Mayor.
Wouldn't that happen, in this situation, wouldn't that be happening already? Isn't that what we're all working on?
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, that is what we're working on now, and that's a little bit about what Mr. Gaiegos spoke about with the coordination with the city departments with streets and Public Works and Neighborhood Services. So, as we get issues in each of your council districts, we do coordinate the city departments that come together to determine how we're going to do the cleanup, if it's on city property or, or private property.
I think the councilman was suggesting a redirection of money. It was not in the form of a motion, so I didn't take it as, as such. But if somebody wants to make a motion on that, we certainly can, we don't have to. But, but I think he was probably maybe a suggestion about prioritization of resources.
Mayor, yes, and it's part of the work that Ms. Johnovich does with her whole group of departments, and they pull Public Works in to do exactly that. And we'll continue to work with District 7 and District 8, who both have neighborhood impacts, to make sure that this is a significant amount of resources. If we need to reimagine it or redirect it, we can work on that with the council district offices.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, the other thing too is that we have a mix of individuals in District 7, some individuals that are very into trying to help out the homeless, and others that are upset and angry. One individual asked us to look up the W-2 forms and the tax returns, and that's seen that the director and some other individuals are getting bonuses in 2000, let me see what this one is. In 2012, there is a bonus of $15,000, another bonus of $1,500.
Director.
Director of, Mr. Mark Hallman, yeah.
The CAS?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, you know, I just want us to look into that as a staff, and then also, 2004, 200, let me look right here, 16, also, that there's some bonuses there. So, I have these that we just pulled up on the internet. I'm not sure if we can actually look into it. They're saying that they need to be good stewards of, of their fundraising efforts, and we need to be good stewards with our tax dollars if we're going to be out there supporting the homeless shelters, that we need to make sure the monies are spent wisely too. So, I'll pass this on. If you can all do some research and figure that out, that'd be great. Thank you.
Excuse me, are you asking if it's accurate, the information you have relative to the compensation as the executive director? I guess I'm...
And, and others, yeah.
Am I sure it's clear, we provide clarity to staff, what you're asking?
Right, if you can look into that, because basically to figure out if we're providing bonuses to individuals actually with the monies that we're providing to, to the Human Services Campus. And if there's a way to allocate that where it's not going towards...
Mayor, Councilman Nowakowski, we'll, we'll take a look at that information, but we do have a specific contract with CAS for specific services that they provide that, that gets monitored by Mr. Gaiegos and his staff.
Councilman, please. Vice Mayor.
So, Councilman Nowakowski, what I'm hearing is, is we're wanting to make sure that our allocation of funding is not going towards revenue, or towards a bonus, or towards financial revenue.
Towards somebody's bonus.
Bonus, okay. All right, thank you.
Right. Mr. Mayor, I don't know if you have a way of, a suggestion of a formal audit? I'm not sure, it's a, where it's awkward conversation, because...
Yeah, I don't know.
You can ask CAS to provide us information relative to the compensation, but, but, I'm not, you know, so...
Yeah, I'm not sure how to answer that we will, that we can do it, but we will take a look at the information and give it our best attempt to discern what we can report.
I mean, can we allocate the funds for certain caseworkers, for example?
Yeah, we can talk a little bit about our contract.
Yes, so, we're one of several funders of CAS, and we monitor annually. I cannot speak specifically to the bonuses that you're referring to, councilman, but we do fund very specific services. That does include case management, and of course, the bed nights that are provided.
And Mayor, just for the record, I mean, I'm a very strong advocate for our Human Service Campus. I volunteer all the time and try to fundraise for, on their fundraising efforts. I just want to make sure that when individuals report to our office different concerns, that I bring it to our staff's knowledge that, and in making sure that if we are spending some of our general funds in supporting the campus, that that funds go into caseworkers or services that help out the homeless directly. Thank you.
Okay, councilman.
Thank you. I'd like Councilman Nowakowski to represent many residents in the area of the CAS campus, or the Human Services Campus, and I am hopeful that additional caseworkers will really help our residents in addition to individuals who are fighting with homelessness, with the idea of getting them into more permanent solutions, or if they have resources that might help them get a better housing situation, that connection. But I do agree with Councilman Nowakowski that this is so high impact on our resident. So, the very first email I read this morning was from a father whose son had just bought a home near the campus and had real significant dumping issues. So, it is something that I think we do need to continue to look at, and maybe as we allocate our Community Development Block grants, we can look and see if there's resources there that could help some of the low-impact, or lower-income neighborhoods in the general area. We do get a lot of questions about alleys and if we can do more as well, even if it's cameras or other tools to, to try to make it feel safer. I am proud that the city, if you look at how much we fund homelessness versus the entire state of Arizona, it's pretty impressive what our commitment is. We really are a leader, and we've gotten great national recognition for the work we're doing, but with the problem increasing at such a high rate, it's, it's hard to keep up. And so, we are going to have to be creative. In, in talking with Government Affairs, they're willing to look at nationwide conversations, because this is happening in cities all over the country, and I think we also owe it to our residents to be part of those conversations, and, and to challenge the other communities in Maricopa County to do more as well. We all talked about this at the first budget meeting, but we are not the social services provider for all of Maricopa County, and we need to make sure that all communities are stepping up and that residents who are facing homelessness have resources in the communities from which they come, because it is so high impact on, on the constituents that Councilman Nowakowski and I serve, and, and it does continue to be a growing problem. So, I think the budget should not, I'm proud that one of the few areas we're prioritizing is homelessness, but it cannot be the end of the conversation. So, I look forward to working with Councilman Nowakowski on a longer-term solution.
Okay. Any other comments on the motion that's on the table? Vice Mayor, any additional comments? Please.
We all received an email today, and, from a constituent, and it was regarding the budget, because she was not going to be able to be here. And one of the items, it talks about summer youth jobs. Where is that money allocated from, or how much is allocated to the summer youth jobs?
Councilman, or Vice Mayor Pastor, if you look in your budget packet in CED, I'm not sure if Chris is here, just talk about it.
Chris Mackey is coming up to.
So, there is, there is a section on page 12 of the budget report that specifically goes over summer youth jobs and talks about the federal funding, and Chris can offer some more insight onto what's available.
Mayor, Vice Mayor Pastor, the funding for, through our WEOA program, our Workforce Innovation Opportunity Act program, is $3.1 million towards our summer youth jobs. It's a more expanded program than we had experienced in the past, allowing us a greater opportunity to bring in kids for longer-term apprenticeships and internships. On the city side, what we did this year is we have gone out and secured privately-funded summer youth opportunities, and we currently have approximately 180 jobs waiting that we are matching with summer youth right now.
Okay, so, my understanding, just for the record, is that, bless you, is that WEOA, the Workforce Innovation Opportunity Act, that's where we're receiving the funding from, and the funding is geared towards summer youth. And with the partnership with the public, I mean, the private, there's additional dollars to provide jobs. The city is not putting $3 million out of the general fund into this program.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, you are correct with one, just one clarification. I don't think I explained it correctly. The youth program that we're doing with the $3.1 million allows us the opportunity not to just focus on the summer, we can focus on the kids for two full years, providing them really meaningful employment, kind of towards moving forward. So, it will be a summer youth program out of the $3.1 million, but it lasts well past the summer for those kids that have an opportunity that aren't in school. We do, particularly for our opportunity use and our MBK, have the opportunity to provide them some meaningful employment for a two-year period of time.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, we have a motion on the table. We have a second. Any additional comments or questions by members of this council? Roll call.
DeCiccio.
No.
Gaiegos.
Yes.
Nowakowski.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Waring. Williams.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stanton.
Yes, so the adoption of the revised budget passes, that was a no from Councilman Waring, so seven to two. All right, excellent, thank you very much, Mr. Barton. Next on the agenda is item number two. Item number two is to report to the city council on our age-friendly communities initiative. And we have our two council members who are chairing this initiative, Councilman Gaiegos and Councilman Williams. I don't know if you have any initial comments you'd like to make before we hear from our outstanding community leaders on this subject.
Thank you. Today's an exciting day for the city of Phoenix, and a great opportunity to build on past success. When I think of where this initiative was initiated, I think of our successful transportation plan, where we had great leadership on the citizen side from Marty Schultz, and a great partnership with AARP Arizona in making sure that we planned for transportation options for people of all ages as we moved forward with Transportation 2050. So, I'd like to thank Dana and her team for really advocating for options so that our residents could age in place, so they'd have access to dial-a-ride, to better bus service, even better roads and rail, in addition to simple things like good signs that are easy to read, read night and day. And we were able to get national recognition for that age-friendly transportation plan, but I suppose with any national recognition, then comes the opportunity to do more, and we got the challenge to become an age-friendly community. It's been a great partnership so far. I would like to thank Mayor Stanton for appointing a great committee, many of whom are here today. So, could the staff and committee members who worked on this initiative stand up or raise your hand so we can recognize you for your hard work?
All right.
We had some of the best and brightest and came up with, with very creative ideas that I think will help us improve our economy in addition to being a great city for, for people of all ages, including older adults, and I'm looking forward to sharing the recommendations from the group. It was wonderful to work with Councilman, Councilwoman Williams on this, a great leader, and I feel like I'm still a student in the Jack Davis and Thelda Williams School of a variety of issues, including how to have better senior centers. So, thank you for helping me become a better council member as well, and, and being a great co-chair.
Councilman.
Thank you. I too want to thank all the members of the committee and staff. And Deanna, thank you so much. I will tell you, they were absolutely 110% committed to making a plan that was workable, achievable, and they could account for every action in this next year coming forth. I'm sorry, Jack's not here, because Jack would tell us we can't say the word "senior" anymore. But we haven't figured out what to replace it with yet, but they took tours, they went everywhere, they really... But they took tours, they went everywhere, they really discussed and got in-depth knowledge on how we do things and how we should do things. And I really appreciate all the suggestions, your comments, and the plan you come up with. I think it was very complete. I see a couple that are sitting back there smiling but shy, who had a lot of input and really made us understand what was going on in this community and what should be going on in this community. So again, thank you all. And thank you, Mayor, for appointing us.
Thank you much for your.
It's a joy to work with.
Thanks for your leadership. And now I'll turn it over. City Manager, who's going to, who's going to lead us in this one? Deanna, please.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I'm Deanna Johnovich, Deputy City Manager. Joining me at the table today is Martin Whitfield, our My Brothers Keeper Coordinator, Dana Kennedy with our Arizona State Director for AARP, Pam Kester, Chief Executive Officer for Arizona Leading Age, and Bob Orf from our Sunny Slope Senior Center. Again, just as a reminder, in October of 2016, the city of Phoenix became a part of the AARP's net, network of age-friendly communities. And joining that membership really means that the community's elected leadership has made the commitment to actively work towards making their city a more age-friendly community. And so as doing that, we as a community have two years to develop an action plan. And you know how competitive we are, so we were no way going to take two years to develop the plan. We did it in months with the help of the leadership here in the room today. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Martin Whitfield, who's going to walk through with the individuals at the table what we've come up with in our plan.
Martin.
Thank you, Ms. Johnovich. Mayor, members of the council, AARP and the World Health Organization identified several steps for cities to participate in the age-friendly initiative. Requirements include completing a local action plan with specific goals and measurements to work toward becoming more age-friendly, conducting a baseline assessment to see what age-friendly programs are already in place in our community. Additional requirements include monitoring the progress of the plan once implemented, continuing to expand on the plan, and finally, most importantly, involving key stakeholders in the entire process. As Councilwoman Gallego and Councilwoman Williams mentioned earlier, Mayor Stanton appointed a diverse 19-member ad hoc committee to assist with the initiative. And I will say that this group is very fun to work with. They played an integral role in developing the recommendations and will lead the community efforts for this initiative. Staff also included several key community members in the development of the local action plan. To assist communities with the age-friendly initiative, the World Health Organization identified several domains of livability: outdoor spaces, transportation, housing, respect and social inclusion, communication and information, community support and health services, civic engagement, employment, and social participation. Now, when the ad hoc committee began discussing the initiative, we determined that the city is already doing many great things in age-friendly areas, including outdoor spaces, transportation, and housing. In year one, the committee chose to focus on the following pillars of livability in the Phoenix Local Action Plan. Civic engagement, to lift the quality of living for everyone in the community, increase employment opportunities for older adults, and then social participation to provide a variety of activities and opportunities to engage older adults. Now, although the committee decided to concentrate on these three specific areas the first year, the plan will be reviewed periodically and we could potentially focus on other areas of need as we deem necessary. Now, at this time, I would like to turn over to our age-friendly ad hoc committee co-chairs to walk through some of the goals and measurements for each pillar of livability. Ms. Kennedy?
Thank you. Mayor and members of the council, under the civic engagement pillar of the committee, we'll, we'll develop a link on AARP's website directing participants to volunteer opportunities in the city to increase the number of participants by 5%, conduct an analysis of programs currently recruiting older adults in the community to utilize their skills in schools and programs such as Experience Corps, tutoring and increase the number of participants by 10%, and support three-area high schools by enhancing an intergenerational program, providing students the opportunity to be mentored by older adults and volunteer with an older program.
Mayor and members of the council, for the employment pillar, the committee will identify programs that are currently recruiting and training older adults for employment and establish an additional seven to 10 partnerships to enhance the programs. The committee will also develop a partnership with local businesses and create a minimum of three to five new employment opportunities in year one. The committee identified the need for older adults to be job-ready. The committee will establish three to five employment-related trainings that will be held in city departments such as the library, parks, and senior centers. The committee will also identify opportunities to create sharing economy and entrepreneurial opportunities for older adults and to establish at least one additional partnership.
Mayor, members of the council, one area of concentration for the age-friendly initiative is to increase participation in the city of Phoenix senior centers. ASU conducted a survey of over 1,000 seniors to better understand the reason seniors attend senior centers and to assist developing additional programming to increase participation at our senior centers. As a result of the survey, the committee will implement a marketing campaign to increase participation and new membership by 10% at the Deer Valley, South Mountain, and Desert West senior centers. These centers were selected due to decreasing membership numbers. The committee will ensure Wi-Fi and computer access is available and working properly at all 15 senior centers and will implement strategies to provide alternative meal options. The city of Phoenix meal contract at the senior centers is in fourth year of a five-year contract, so the committee thought it was a good idea to take into consideration survey feedback on meal options and review over the next year.
Thank you, Ms. Orf. Mayor and members of the council, if the age-friendly local action plan is approved today, the team will continue to meet periodically to achieve the goals of the plan and provide updates to the mayor and council. Staff requests your approval of the age-friendly local action plan and would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much, Martin and the team. Excellent presentation and a lot of good work in a relatively short period of time. Obviously, if successful today, we're just getting started. Then the real fun begins. Councilwoman, if you have any comments on the proposal here today, either the leaders of our age-friendly communities task force, ad hoc task force?
Well, aside from pickleball, which is the hottest game in town and everyone wants a court, we learned a lot through that survey and I was very appreciative for everyone who was involved in that. But I think one of the most important things we learned is we don't publicize what we do now. And we do many things that are really beneficial, it's just no one knows about it. And the survey showed, well, they didn't have transportation. Well, it turns out, nobody knows about our cab program. So I think a lot of effort will be in making people aware of what's already available and that will help guide us in the future on where we need to target in the future. But again, thank all of you for what you've done so far and I look forward to the next step. Thank you.
Please, Councilman.
Thank you. And we have already gotten started. So one of the challenges AARP asked, or the whole program asked us to do was to include seniors in decision-making. So I think Councilwoman Stark might have been the first to do that with an additional budget hearing for seniors and we had several other at Shadow Mountain. And we had several other this year that were additional to try to make sure seniors were all well-included, although I messed up and scheduled mine during bingo, which I shall never do again. But we did get some, some additional comments from seniors, including many about, that went into this process and we can help move forward. And we're also moving forward on a variety of other programs. So at a recent council meeting, we moved forward on our Creative Aging Grant with the Arts Department and that will also involve senior centers. We are definitely getting started and not waiting the full two years of planning to act. I think there's a lot more that we can do in this space and I'm very interested in the health space, but felt like right now with the national conversation, it maybe wasn't the right time to fully take that on until we see at the federal level where we end up in that particular space, since there's a lot of impact on people of all ages, including older adults. I am also very much glad that we had a data-driven effort, so we got great information on areas where we were already doing well. The Streets Department got very high ratings, so congratulations to our transportation team. One area that surprised me until I looked at that it was focused on all people over 50 was that we needed to do better in employment opportunities, but that did end up being a real dialogue that many people were losing their jobs before they were ready to retire or they needed to supplement their income. One of the things we're doing that I think is very innovative is we'll introduce seniors in a bigger way to the, to the sharing economy so that if you don't want a full-time job but that some work is important for you from income, you can learn about the ways you might be able to take advantage of that new resource and that'll, I hope, expand our economy as is, we had great partners working on entrepreneurial activity and there's, I think, a consensus, if you are a 25-year-old male living in San Francisco, there is an app to solve any problem that you have, but there may be not as much attention on the needs of older adults from the entrepreneurial community. And if we can make Phoenix even more of a hub in that area, that will be great for our economy as well as helping older adults solve problems. So I'm very excited about the potential in that area. We're already getting great recognition for our entrepreneurial growth, including this weekend's USA Today, but we're not done yet and this will help us expand that strategic opportunity. So looking forward to implementing this plan and thank you to all of the community members who have just gotten started, helping us become a more age-friendly city.
Thank you very much for your leadership and comments. We have a citizen who wanted to provide comments as well, Richard Knopf. Great to see you, thanks for coming down.
Thank you. I'm a citizen and a proud member of the task force. Rick Knopf from the ASU Partnership for Community Development. I wanted to give a ringing endorsement of the process. We had two things going on, a very exhaustive review of best practices nationally and globally, but also a deep dive into our diverse population, ranging from the most vulnerable citizens to maybe non-vulnerable, people very accomplished in their lives and want to give back and searching for ways to intertwine them all. Also wanted to mention that Martin Whitfield was an inspiration to me a long time ago when he was a little kid in my class at ASU. And he represented the ultimate in professionalism, service, and integrity. It is symbolic of the interfacing between ASU and this community. We're very proud of that relationship. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, now see if there is a, Councilman, please.
Mayor, I just really want to thank our two colleagues, Gallegos and Williams, for taking on this, this task. And also, I would like to see if we can maybe put a couple other members from the Maryville area and also from the Desert West Senior Center and also the South Mountain Senior Center, seeing that's one of our goals is to increase the attendance there. Maybe we can have advocates from those two centers to kind of help out. I know those two areas are in my district and also in District Eight. And one of the things that we, we find is that there's cultural differences in languages, so you know, especially Spanish for the outreach of the seniors. So if we can actually maybe look into that, I'm not sure if that's an appointment for you, Mayor, or?
Okay, I very much appreciate the suggestion and we can always look for quality new members, additional members, because there's a lot of work ahead.
Mayor, Councilman Noakowski, members of the council, we do actually want other people outside of the task force, so the smaller work groups that they're co-chairing, we do have community members participating as well. So if there's individuals that we want to add to those subcommittees, we can certainly do that.
Thank you very much. All right, is there a motion? Oh, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Stark, please, I apologize.
Thank you. Very good work. I really appreciate what you're doing. So just one quick question. So you attacked three areas, but your thought process is then you'll take on another three areas? Or do you want to see these through first and see the data before you look at outdoor spaces or transportation? I want to just understand the process a little bit better. It looks great, I just wonder, because I think some of these other pillars are very, very important as well.
Mayor, Councilwoman Stark, members of the council, absolutely every area is important. What we tried to do is identify what we could manage in the first year. So these are the areas that the committee wanted to focus on initially, but we'll continue to go back. We'll also be gathering information in the other areas on what we're already doing to push that information out as well. So when we talk about outdoor space, as we're marketing the senior centers and coming up with the plan, we'll include some of that information as well.
Because Mayor, I think that going to what Councilman Noakowski said, respect and social inclusion, and so maybe it is a good idea to get a couple more members that provide that diversity to make sure we're addressing the issue of social inclusion.
All right, thank you very much. Councilman Waring, please.
So maybe for the city manager, so where does the money for all this come from?
Mayor, Councilman Waring, what we'd anticipate is that this would inform the existing resources that we have in the city and make sure that those resources are going in a targeted way that aligns with this. If there is a need for additional resources, that would have to come back through a budget process. At this point, the committee has not asked for additional resources, so it will simply be, how does, particularly in human services and parks, where we have existing money and programs, do we align them with the goals and direction of this work plan?
I mean, as I'm looking at the packet, you know, there are quite a few things like monitoring and so forth. All that takes time, which presumably takes money, staff resources and so forth. I know we have the, for lack of a better term, the eight-hour rule. I mean, it just seems like any kind of study takes more than eight hours.
Mayor, Councilman Waring, thank you for, I should have mentioned, whereas if you recall, we added last year one position to the team that Deanna heads in strategic initiatives that includes Martin, Tamara, and Sergio, who together formed that team. This is part of the work that was added when we added that position last year, to do that work that you mentioned, the monitoring and the reporting that comes from this group. That the council added that in the budget last year.
So thank you for, I do remember we discussed this, so that was actually hiring a person?
Correct.
Okay. To Councilman DeCio's point earlier, I wish we would have hired a police officer instead. So appreciate the committee's work. I'll be voting no on this. I mean, we're going to study things like, I guess, transportation. I'm not sure if we find a weakness, what are we going to do? Put a light rail line over there? I mean, it's $60 million or something a mile, plus all the doodads to make it work. That just doesn't seem realistic to me. If we find expensive needs, we don't, we're not going to have the money to do it, as was highlighted earlier in the buttage of discussion a year from now. And, you know, we keep adding people for stuff like this and then we don't hire officers and we don't have enough money to do it. So, thank you though. I appreciate the clarification because that, that does help. It reminded me of last year's vote. Thank you.
Mayor?
Councilman, please.
I remember distinctly when this program come up, because I think I'm the one that told you you were maxed out and that you had to add a position to handle all that you were doing because you do not only this but domestic violence, you do the.
MBK.
Human trafficking.
Yeah, human trafficking, you're doing all those programs. And I really commend you for the excellent job you're doing. And from my perspective, I understand that there is sufficient money to hire police officers. That's not the problem, it's finding people who are willing to become officers and can make it through the process. So I feel that this is money well-spent because when you look at some of these programs, actually, almost all of the programs that the city of Phoenix does, they have a public safety portion in every single one of them. If we don't do housing and we don't do this human trafficking and we don't talk about domestic violence, seniors are vulnerable. It all requires police action, public safety, fire response. Fire tells me how many times they have to go to senior housing. And some of them, they're on a first-name basis, it's so often. So when, we can provide a service like this and have so many members of the community involved, and AARP is a huge, huge asset to this because they have a network far better than the city of Phoenix, I'm sorry to say. But by them partnering with us, it really, really maximizes the pennies we do spend when you look at it proportionally. So I, I just think it's very important that we consider the whole picture. And I would move, Mayor, that we accept this as proposed.
Do we have a motion in favor? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any additional comments by members of this council? A quick comment, I want to thank the committee. I'm sorry, were you next, Vice Mayor? Councilman Valenzuela, the floor is yours.
Does it to me all the time, Mayor. No, I, I want to thank the committee for, for all your hard work. I am appreciative. Before this, this item, we talked about the budget. And in that budget, we are hiring more than 250 police officers. And I, for one, am advocating for as many police officer hirings.
And I, for one, am advocating for as many police officer hirings as possible. But this is a, you know, this is a topic that is important to our constituency, for those who are seniors, those who are not, and we all aspire to be. And, you know, it's a cost of living. It has to do with our cost of living. We want libraries, we want parks, we want senior centers, we want the school programs. And this, I've always believed that the greatest investment that you can make is in people. And if you have an opportunity, and if you have a, you know, a budget, and if you can use that budget to, you know, to buy hardware or software, whatever the case might be, the most important investment you can make is someone who can actually run those things, run with these programs. And I am absolutely supportive of this program. I want to thank our two co-chairs, two very strong advocates, and Councilwoman Thelma Williams, and Councilwoman Kate Gallego. And I especially would like to thank, and I think they would agree also, our city staff, you know, thank you so much, Martin and Deanna, and of course, all of our partners. Thank you. This is incredible for our city. It's a, it's, it shows that we're on the right track here. So I'm absolutely supportive.
Thank you very much. Councilman DeCiccio?
Thank you, Mayor. I mean, just following the comments from Councilman Waring, the concerns are the fact that it's nothing to do with your program, or what it is and all the work that you put into it. It's the fact of the matter is that the City of Phoenix just hasn't put something together that, it's nice, as you look at each one of these programs individually, they're great. I mean, how could you not support this? This is fantastic. It's got, you did a ton of work on it. You know, I've got parents that are 89 years old, I think they're past the AARP age, I think. I'm just kidding, I know. But, but at the end, you know, at the end of the day, the fact of the matter is, you know, when you do these one-offs like this, like we do throughout the city, you have to just judge them and what they are, and they're in front of us. And the fact of the matter is, this one here doesn't cost any additional dollars. When it comes to, and you will come to us in asking us for more money, is my guess. If you do, then that'll be a different discussion. I, you know, I'm conflicted on either way, because I think fiscally, we should be judging everything by what it is that they're, you know, that you're going to be providing compared to something else, and whether it's police officers or firefighters, or you name the function, that's how you compare it. And it's hard to do that when you do these one-offs like that. But in this case here, there is no additional dollars, and, you know, seniors would be a very high priority for me, so I'm going to end up supporting it. But if you do come back for more money, that might be, and more likely will be, a different story, until we get at least our prioritizations in place at the City of Phoenix. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you very much. Any other comments by members of this council? I would say thanks again to the leadership of the ad hoc committee, the citizen leaders did a great work, and I can't wait to see what additional recommendations come. It's very important that we remain a competitive city for people of all ages, including especially our most experienced citizens, because those are talented individuals that we need to be close to our schools or other social institutions, because we need that talent to be volunteering and using that time to help that next generation. So for so many different reasons, we don't want to lose our most experienced people that have great life stories to tell and can mentor the next generation. So I'll certainly be supporting this motion. And with that, roll call.
Councilman DeCiccio.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gallego.
Yes.
Councilman Nowakowski.
Yes.
Councilwoman Stark.
Yes.
Councilman Valenzuela. Councilman Waring. Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Pastor.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes, and so by eight-to-one vote, our proposal for age-friendly community initiative passes. Thank you so very much, look forward to seeing you soon. Next on our agenda is proposed amendments to the city lobbying ordinance. I'll give a moment for the folks who are transitioning out to leave, and then we can begin this agenda item. Our Mr. Manager, I'll hand it over to you to move forward with, I'd like to proceed on the proposed amendments to our city lobbying ordinance.
Thank you, Mayor. This effort's really been led by members of our legal team, headed by our city attorney, Brad Holm, and our city prosecutor, Vicky Hill, and prosecutor Jessica Breedlove. So I will turn it over to Mr. Holm.
Thank you. And, Mayor, members of the council, we're grateful for the opportunity today to present to you some options regarding the lobbying ordinance. In the context of recent events, we determined that the lobbying ordinance lacks some features to make it more enforceable. And so as a result of that, I asked the city prosecutor, Vicky Hill, and the assistant city prosecutor, Jessica Breedlove, to survey other jurisdictions to determine if they could, what best practices were around the country. And so through their efforts, the jurisdictions both here in Arizona that have lobbying ordinances, and from our peer top 10, or largest 10 cities around the country were surveyed. And as a result of that effort, we gained a sense of what best practices are in terms of lobbying ordinances and how they're best enforced. And as a result of that, we have developed some options. We presented those options to the Public Safety Subcommittee approximately two weeks ago, and received feedback from them on how to enhance those options for your consideration. Since then, we've received additional feedback in briefings with individual council members and staffs. And so we're here today to present to you some options to consider that align with what we think are best practices, based on our survey, and for your consideration. Then we have an initial presentation, and we've also presented to you a draft ordinance. We'll note in the course of the presentation, some slight changes between the options that are available and the draft ordinance. And then again, to remind you, this is on for consideration at formal on May 31, the ordinance, as it might be revised based on input received from you here today. So with that, I'll ask Assistant City Prosecutor Jessica Breedlove if she would run through the presentation to show you some of the options for your consideration. Jessica.
Thank you, Brad. As he indicated, Mayor Stanton, Vice Mayor Pastor, council members, my name's Jessica Breedlove, and I'm Assistant City Prosecutor with the Law Department, and I'm here to talk about the lobbying ordinance. The roadmap for our discussion today is current law, how it works, definitions involving current law, enforcement and sanction options, changes that we already have underway with the City Clerk's Department, feedback that we received from Public Safety and Veterans Affairs, and then subsequent feedback that we received. So the first item we're going to talk about is current law. So the current lobbying ordinance is under Chapter Two, Article 30, and it has a definition section, a registration, exceptions, political contributions, forms and filing, and prohibited lobbying. How the ordinance currently works is essentially when a lobbyist has contact with an elected city official, they have five days to register, and that current registration process is a paper process through the city clerk's office. Once an individual is registered, then certain disclosure requirements are triggered. Those requirements include any kind of expenditures that the lobbyist would make in regards to lobbying a particular council person. And the, also, in regards to the quarterly disclosures, there's the political contributions as well. When a registered lobbyist makes any kind of political contributions for an elected city official, then those have to be disclosed. Additionally, if they solicit political contributions, and those solicitations actually garner contributions, then those are part of those disclosure, those quarterly disclosures as well. There's the exceptions, which are listed in your draft ordinance, forms and filings, which essentially requires that these things be done under oath, and then finally prohibited lobbying. What prohibited lobbying is, is it prohibits contingency contracts. You cannot hire a lobbyist and indicate, "I will pay you $5,000 to lobby, and $10,000 if you get my item passed or killed." That's prohibited as part of our ordinance. And as you can see, we've gone through each one of those sections, and there is not a section that indicates if you fail to register, or you fail to do your disclosures, that that's a violation, and what those penalties are. In addition to looking at the sections of the current law, I also wanted to draw the attention to the definitions. The current definition to lobby means communication with any elected city official for the purposes of influencing city action. Lobbyist is defined in the ordinance as means any person who is compensated to lobby for a person other than themselves. The definition of elected city official means the mayor, members of city council, and whether serving by election or appointment. And finally, official action means any non-action or action of city council. So those are sort of important definitions to understand when you're thinking about this particular ordinance. So as indicated, we were asked to survey other jurisdictions, and we did that. And during that survey, we kind of saw continually best practices or common practices that were popping up in the survey. One of those things was transparency and compliance. Generally, when we looked at these types of ordinances, the focus of these ordinances was governmental transparency and to make people compliant, which means there wasn't sort of an automatic sanction for a violation. And that's where I have cure notice. In many of the ordinances that we looked at, there was a cure notice. So whoever is administering that particular program, if they got information that somebody was not in compliance, a letter would go out, and the letter would say, "We don't believe that you're currently in compliance with our ordinance, you have 15 days to get into compliance." Now, that amount of time, I saw really ranged. We saw 10 days, all the way up to 60 days with the federal government for that compliance notice or that cure, but we saw that time and time again. Another thing that continued, we continued to see in our survey was ethics boards and commissions, sort of an independent body that takes a look at these particular violations. Also, that administrative staff for the mayor and council offices being included in the definition of elected city officials, again, we kept seeing that as that expanded definition. And then finally, electronic registration. We actually spoke with one jurisdiction that said, once they had electronic registration, compliance sort of just jumped up, they really didn't have any cases of non-compliance. And so again, that really goes back up to that compliance issue and making sure that we have an ease of compliance for registration of lobbyists. So as indicated, we presented three options in regards to possible enforcement mechanism for this ordinance, and one of those is the Ethics Commission. As you know, you all passed an Ethics Commission in February of this year, and one of the options we indicated was you could essentially piggyback on that process. The Ethics Commission would essentially take the inquiry, do the investigation, make the findings, and make a recommended sanction. Now, this option would comport with the procedures that we were really seeing in a majority of the larger jurisdictions. The second option would be a bit of a hybrid. What it essentially is, is that the Ethics Commission would accept the inquiry, and then make a probable cause finding. And if they found probable cause that a violation existed, then it would be forwarded to the prosecutor's office with a complaint being filed, be it civil or criminal, whatever the body decided. And then finally, the third option we provided to the subcommittee was a more traditional option, and that would be an investigation by the police department and prosecution by the city prosecutor's office, again, based on what council decided, it being a civil or criminal violation. We also provided sanction options. One of those options is that sanctions could be civil, and I gave an example that in Chicago, they have a fine of $1,000 per violation per day. So their ethics board recently, just this year, gave a violation, gave a sanction of $90,000, because an individual had been in violation for 90 days, and they gave him a $1,000 fine for each violation, coming up to a $90,000 fine. So that's just an example of what a civil violation could look like. A second would be criminal, obviously very traditional, it could be probation, jail, and a fine up to $2,500 in regards to our jurisdiction. And then finally, we continue to see prohibition from lobbying coming up, where that was an option for a particular sanction, so you could prohibit an individual from registering or lobbying for a certain amount of time. Or finally, we can do a combination, or what I would call a progressive sanction. And I'll show you on the next slide what a progressive sanction could look like. Progressive sanction options, so we could do something like this, where our first offense would be a civil violation with $1,000 per violation and a prohibition for 30 days. A second offense within 84 months or seven years would be $2,000 per violation with a prohibition for 60 days. And then finally, a third offense within 84 months or seven years would be a Class One misdemeanor, again, with a prohibition for lobbying for approximately 90 days. That's just an example of what a progressive sanction could look like. And then finally, we got a request in regards to registration triggers. When looking at, and this might be easier for you to actually look at the document in front of you, because the type is a little small here, but I've got a number, I've got the cities listed in population, the top 10, and that indicates what their registration trigger is. So many cities, about half, or maybe a little over half, any kind of paid lobbyist, you're triggered and you have to register. But there are some cities like New York and Los Angeles that have a work or amount of money. So if somebody does 30 hours over three months, or somebody does $5,000 of work, then once that is triggered, they have to register. Some changes we have already underway, the city clerk's office has electronic registration, they're working on that, and that's targeted for January 2018. And also an 11th floor kiosk for registration, and that's really ready upon council directions. So again, we would have, giving lobbyists all the opportunities that they need to register easily, and do so on the 11th floor. So this is some of the feedback that we got from the Public Safety and Veterans Subcommittee on May 10. One of the things they seemed interested in was that first option of electronic, or excuse me, Ethics Commission. The second thing, immediate enforcement. There was a question about the fact that the Ethics Commission doesn't go, doesn't sit until January 2018, so what were we going to do between now and that time? And so in the draft that you have, it does address the fact that during that period of time, those inquiries would just come straight to the city attorney's office. Include boards and commissions as the individuals who can be lobbied, and also include mayor, staff, and council as individuals who can be lobbied. A cure notice. The progressive sanction, it seems like there was a consensus in regards to liking the idea of having that sort of progressive sanction getting harder and harder. A disclosure requirement. What I mean by that is, there was several comments about the fact that, what if I, as a council person, was approached at church, or at school, or at some non-city function? How am I supposed to know whether or not that person is a lobbyist? And so one of the things we did was we looked to the state, and the state has a disclosure requirement, and we've added that to the draft you have here, which essentially says if a lobbyist comes up to you and is speaking to you as a lobbyist, then they have to disclose that. So they would have to indicate, "As you know, I have a client, this is my client, and this is what I'm talking to you about." And then finally, some definition changes. There was a request that we define compensation, that compensation definition is currently included in your draft, and also that we make a clarification in the lobbying definition that it was communication by a lobbyist to influence action, and so that is in your draft as well. Now, since that time, we also got additional feedback, and we wanted to include that in these possible items for action, for you giving us guidance as to what you want the draft to look like. And so when we're going through those, if it has an asterisk, that means it's not contained in the draft that you currently have, but we can obviously, if that's the consensus of the body, we can include that. And the ones that don't have an asterisk are already included in the draft that you have in front of you. So these are the proposed substantive changes. Number one is that the Ethics Commission be the body who accepts the inquiries and does the investigation and recommends the sanction with interim enforcement through the city attorney's office. Number two, that we include a progressive sanction with a first and second offense as a civil and a third offense as a Class One misdemeanor. Some definition, important definition changes. Number one, that a lobbyist be defined as somebody who's principally compensated. Now, that is not included in the draft you have, obviously, if that's the way the body would like to go, we can include that in the next draft. That lobbying be clarified, that that term is by a lobbyist, and that is currently included in the draft you have. Compensation is in the draft you have. City official, the draft that you have includes boards and commissions, however, we've got additional feedback that there would be interest in including city manager's office, executive staff, and department heads. So what you currently have includes boards and commissions and administrative staff of mayor and council, but we can add city manager, executive staff, and department heads. And then expenditures, there was also, we got additional feedback after subcommittee of interest in expanding the definition of what expenditure means. It currently means expenditure the lobbyist makes to benefit a particular council member, but just to really expend it to any kind of expenditure that they incur in furtherance of their lobbying activity. Again, that's not in your current draft, but if that's the will of the body, we can definitely add that. Number four would be the cure notice, which is in there right now with 15 days. Five, that disclosure requirement I talked about, so when a registered lobbyist has communication with you, they have to disclose that fact. We also got feedback about a statute of limitations, and so what we currently discussed was a statute of limitations of one year. And the reason why we did that is, a criminal violation does have a statute of limitation of one years, so we thought even with that civil violation, that would just be consistent sake, is that from the violation, there's one year to file a complaint. The civil can change, if that's the will of the body, but we think that because there's a one year for the... a one year for the, for the criminal violation, that that would make sense for the civil violation as well. Number seven was an interest in extending the maximum fine on the civil violations, the $2,500. There's currently a mandatory minimum for a first offense, $1,000; for a second offense, $2,000. That would be the mandatory minimum and maximum, based on how our charter is written. But what we could write in there is saying that that could go from a mandatory minimum of $1,000 up to $2,500 based on the severity or this decision that the Ethics Commission makes or recommendation. And then the final point is the amount of time of the suspension from lobbying. What's in your current draft is 30 days for a first offense, 60 days for a second offense, 90 days for a third offense, but we could also raise that to 90 days for a first offense, six months for a second offense, and one year for a third offense. But that's really the guidance that we're looking for on those points for our next draft. And so these final points, or any other points that you guys come up with today, if you can give us guidance on that, and then our recommendation would be to place this item on, as revised, based on your guidance, for action on the next agenda for May 31st. Thank you so much, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you very much. Mr. Hall, anything additional?
Nothing additional.
Nothing additional, Mayor.
All right, I'll hand it over to Councilwoman Williams to see if she might have comments and then a motion.
I do have a couple of comments. I thank you for all the work that you've put in and speedily. I just talked to him about 11:30 this morning, so some of these items have been added. Would you explain what principally compensated means?
I'll ask Jessica Breedlove to handle that.
One of the discussions was whether or not we wanted to, who we were trying to catch in our net. And, and the real effort in this particular ordinance, that I think it has always been, is to capture actual paid lobbyists and not people who are not actual paid lobbyists to do lobbying activities. So the idea of indicating principally compensated is really to narrow the net that we're using and to really deal with the people that we want to deal with, which are paid lobbyists.
Thank you. And then the second one is any expense incurred on that same. And what would that include?
Mayor Stanton, Councilwoman Williams, that would include any expenditure. So an expenditure to hire a subcontractor, an expenditure to hire petitioners, or people to circulate petitions, any expenditure that they're making to further their lobbying would need to be disclosed if we expand that definition of expenditures.
Thank you. And I appreciate you expanding the city official. I think that's very important, because it's important to me, as city councilperson, to know when staff members are lobbied. I think it's, I have nothing against lobbyists. Often, I learn a lot from them. It's like two sides of a coin. And, but I think it's important that we know that that occurs. So, Mayor, I would move to remind them that there are changes that will be, need to be made based on our comments today. But to bring it back to us, I would think that what, the draft that we have is very workable. I would like to see the additions that you made here today. It's not numbered on the proposal, or I believe the commission needs to do it. Progressive, I think is important. The definitions, I'm very supportive of. And the expenditure, I think is extremely important. And amend the cure. I would like to see the statuation, or limitations of a year, extending that to, how, how did you describe it, minimum versus maximum? However, we have the option that fits within our ordinance, that we can go as high as we need to, that is defendable. And that was the $2,500?
Mayor Stanton, Councilwoman Williams, yes, correct.
And personally, I, I like the suspension from lobbying if they're found to be the 96 months and a year. I think it will take quite a bit for someone to fall under this ordinance. I think everyone's going to be very aware of it. And with the easier process, I think it's very important that we have accessibility via the computer, that you can just log on, you no longer have to have anything notarized. Or if they totally blew it, didn't know about it, and they come on the 11th floor, there's a computer right there that they can log in and be registered. And I think that's very important. And personally, I won't accept any excuses for failure in that regard. I think we're making it as easy as we can, but we're actually going to be putting penalties on there. So I would like to see them incorporate that, bring it back to us at our next meeting.
All right, so that is the motion. Is there, there is a second on the motion. Councilwoman Pastor, Vice Mayor, you had some questions?
Yeah, I, I caught the, the conversation. Definition changes, number three, it's item three. Could you please go back? Letter A in principally compensated. Can you make that clear? I didn't catch it. I caught some of it, and then I was trying to figure out what page we were on.
It was confusing, though, the way that she, the way it was described.
Mayor Stanton, Vice Mayor Pastor, the principally compensated, the reason why we, based on the feedback that we got from council members, were recommending a change to that, is there was concerns about who we were catching in the net of regulation. And so typically, the definition would just be, you're paid. If you're paid, then you do lobbying activity, you would have to register. By narrowing it to principally compensated, we're, we're trying to not catch individuals who maybe on a one-time, once a year, might meet with one of you, say, business owner, might meet with you once a year and ask you to support some particular piece of legislation. They're not compensated as lobbyists. Now, maybe there might be some part of their job that's referenced that, and we were just really trying to clarify that the, what we were trying to gather, or what we were trying to grasp at, were paid lobbyists who are making contact with city officials.
It doesn't, I'm just sorry, I'm very confused now.
So, so Mayor, Vice Mayor, may I take a shot at it? So if you look-
You may, although there's lots of people who receive significant compensation for lobbying, who may not be principally compensated for lobbying. And I'm guessing the intent of the body is to have, make, ensure for transparency reasons that those individuals have to be registered. So I don't know if you're able to address that particular issue, because I think if we did, if we use the term principally compensated, we are getting to such a narrow group and also putting us in a position of having to review people's salary and/or compensation from all sources in their life, and that's probably not where we're getting at. If you're getting paid to lobby, you should be registering. I think that's the intent of what the subcommittee wanted. And I'm not sure where the word principally came from. I apologize.
Mayor, before you explain it, I'm probably the one that pushed this because I talk to a couple of business owners, especially around Metro Center, on a regular basis. And it's not that they're asking me to do something. We work on how together we can make a lot of this happen, but I don't consider that truly lobbying, because it's not a specific thing. We're just trying to reinvent Metro Center and make it successful and bring the business back. And I'm sure all of you, you talk to CEOs or other people about something that's important, but I, it's not like they're lobbying and say, "You've got to pass this today." That's not what it's about. It's much broader than that. It's long-range planning. I mean, there's all different ways to talk about it. So we were trying to figure out a solution on how to eliminate those conversations from the people that are coming in and saying, "We need this passed."
And I think, obviously, in part of this process, our staff has reviewed best practices. We're hardly the first governmental entity dealing with the issue of defining lobbying without capturing the small business owner that is here presenting ideas about how the city can improve better. What did your best practice as research come up with? I, I don't, was principally compensated considered a best practice, or was it just trying to deal with a particular issue?
Mayor, council, members of council, that's a great question. Generally, we were trying to react to some comments that we'd received. The cleanest way, as the mayor points out, is to not put the word principally in there, just to say lobbyist means any person who is compensated to lobby for a person other than himself. That is the cleanest, simplest way. It makes it the most enforceable way, and it sweeps in people who are, who may not receive, as you say, their principal compensation from lobbying, but receive a significant share of their compensation from lobbying. So, long story short, is that's the cleanest way to do it. But it's a policy choice whether to narrow it up. And so that was what we were responding to. We put the word principally in as late as, I think, late morning today, to suggest that if you wanted to narrow the net, you could narrow the net by putting principally in, but that may leave some people, therefore, not regulated.
If you feel comfortable answering this, is it your opinion that if we were to remove the word principally, the situation that Councilwoman Williams has just described, small business owner coming down here to give ideas about how the city can better adopt policies to improve his, would that person be captured by the lobbyist's definition if we were to remove principally?
Mayor, Councilwoman Williams, we don't believe that. We wouldn't anticipate enforcing the lobbying ordinance against that at all, because we recognize that you have constituents that all the time come down to talk to you about issues, problems that they have, requests that they would make upon the city to improve services. We understand that. We don't consider that lobbying in this classic definition that's in here as it is. But again, to respond to issues, we're willing to offer you options, and one option would be to narrow the net, as opposed to leave it a little bit more broadly, which we think is more consistent with best practices.
Mayor, oh, can I?
Councilman DeCecio, did you have a question or comment?
Yeah, I did on that, because at first, I didn't like this. Until Councilwoman Williams started bringing it up, I didn't know that was your idea on this. But the, the concern is this, is that, I mean, because staff says that, well, it's not a person we would go after, the way it's written means you would. So you could selectively go after individuals doing that. There has to be a way to carve out those business owners or individuals that are, you know, that own that business, that are allowed to talk to you. Otherwise, you're going to be, I mean, you're going to, you've essentially stopped individuals from petitioning their free, from their government by doing that. You don't want to do that. You don't want to, it's essentially a free speech issue, too.
Mayor Stanton, Councilman DeCecio, actually, there's a specific exemption that exempts an individual who's lobbying on their own behalf. The only thing that this regulates is individuals who are paid by somebody else to lobby for somebody else's viewpoint. So even if, let's just, just to give you an example, even if we had a registered lobbyist who happens to live in the city of Phoenix, and they have something wrong with their street, they can come to you and not have to disclose, not have to do anything, because that's their right as a citizen. It's really only those instances where somebody is paid to put forth somebody else's viewpoint. And that's how these definitions are currently drafted, and that's who it captures.
Now, with that language, I want to make sure I read that language specifically when, you know, we can vote this thing through, it's going to come through another time around, too. I want to read that in particular, because I just want to make sure we don't penalize small business owners. But so let's take it, Mayor, sorry, I did interrupt, but is that, can I follow through on a couple of questions?
You did not interrupt, and you may follow through, please.
All right, thank you. The other part deals with, let's say you got ahead of a company. Doesn't have to be a large company, it could be a small company, where they don't own the company, right? They're basically hired on. So does that individual have to then register under this scenario?
That's fact, fact-specific. I would say if a, let's say, a head or a CEO, if that particular company doesn't have a lobbyist, and so part of that CEO's job is that function to have these contacts, to ask you to support or not support particular legislation, then I would say, under this ordinance, best practice would be for you to register, because you're paid by another to lobby, and part of your job is to lobby. Now, if it's a person who, it's not normally part of their job, a CEO that's not normally part of their job, and, you know, then I think it, they probably don't, but I, it's hard to answer that, that question specifically without referencing a specific situation. So I think in some situations, yes, in some situations, no.
Well, let me give you two situations. LLCs are considered corporate bodies. I mean, would that individual have to, when they have a small, they're almost, I would think of almost every single business in the city of Phoenix has some type of corporate document that attaches to it. So either it's done through a corporate, full corporations, or through an LLC where they're the individual owner. It could be a UPS store, where they are, basically, they could have set up as a corporation in behalf of the corporation. Would that person have to?
Mayor Stanton, Councilman DeCecio, no, because they're the sole person who's lob, who's essentially talking to you, lobbying on their own behalf. The way it's currently written in the ordinance essentially says, for somebody other, you know, other than their own behalf, and in that particular case, even though that's an LLC, it's still on their own behalf.
Okay, that's important, because you don't want to stop small business owners in particular. I want to thank Councilwoman Williams for bringing that up, because I had other questions that are, this is even bigger than those questions, only because of the fact that it's the whole idea of, you don't, you know, you want to capture those that are paid to do this, and those that are, you know, basically compensated by others. But if they're a small business owner, if they're a business owner, you don't want to have to capture them. It just doesn't make any sense. They have a right to come and talk to you.
And Mayor Stanton, Councilman DeCecio, this is exactly what we were trying to accomplish. We heard from you, you want to be able to hear from people, and we're trying not to stifle that.
And, you know, I'm very supportive of this so far, but I want to, you know, I want to see the final language when we get through it, through that. Like I said, I wasn't a fan of this principally compensated part of it until I think Councilwoman Williams started bringing up the questions on that. And, you know, I just, and I like the idea, too, of including executive staff, department heads. I think that's an important net to keep in there. So I want to thank everybody that worked on this. I mean, it's a lot of work that you put into it, and it looks pretty good. I mean, it's pretty much in line with a lot of things that are going on around the country right now. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councilman Valenzuela.
Thank you. I am, I'm glad we're having the discussion. I wish previous councils had moved some policy on this, but here we are today, and I'm glad that we are doing it now. A couple of things. I think we're, we're on the right track. I think we're all pretty clear that this is for those who are being paid to actually lobby on someone else's viewpoint. They're, they're being paid to lobby for someone else's interest. I think we all agree to that. And the first step is to come up with some compliance here, because there are probably several people who have lobbied and maybe, you know, for whatever reason, they haven't filed their paperwork. We have to come up with, with compliance. We have to come up with a system that is easy to sign up on, where there are no excuses. I certainly don't want to hear, "The dog ate my homework. I mailed it in, it didn't get to you." I mean, there's no excuse for that. The city of Phoenix, and the way we do business here, it is all about transparency, it's about public trust, and, and we have to guard that. That's our responsibility. So it's about compliance, it's about transparency, no excuses. I, for one, taking a look at action items for draft ordinance proposal, I believe it might be the next page. Yeah, number eight, I am absolute, I'm not, I'm not supportive of A. I think for, for a lot of lobbyists, you know, and for a lot of people doing business, I mean, a thousand dollar fine is a lot of money to some people. It might be, some people might chalk it up as the cost of doing business, and we want to prevent that here at the city of Phoenix. So B, you know, 90 days, 90 days, six months, one year, I think that's more like it. I, I don't, I don't think, even with heavy fines, suspending someone for 30, 60, 90 days, I don't think that, that does it. I don't, I don't know if that scares anyone. And so I am more supportive of, of option B. I do appreciate where we are headed when it comes to this. This needs to be an ordinance, this is long overdue, and it needs to be ordinance and policy that we're all very proud of, and that the people of Phoenix are very proud of. And obviously, you know, advocating that all of this information is easily found online as well. We want to make it as transparent as possible, a clear-cut policy on, on what it is to, to do business and to lobby on behalf of others at the city of Phoenix, and to do it right. and to lobby on behalf of others at the city of Phoenix, and to do it right. And now, to that point, I will say that there are, you know, we, we meet with people, I meet with people all the time, who I feel that are doing this right. And, you know, I feel like they are above board, they're, they come in, the meetings are on the calendar, and so on and so forth, and we just have to keep it that way for this council, for the next council, and so on and so forth. So thank you.
Thank you very much. And I believe eight B, that option, was included in the motion made by Councilwoman Williams. Okay, Councilon Noakowski, please.
Yes, Mayor, I want to go under definitions and changes, number three, and then go down to D. Basically, boards and commissions. I have some concerns with boards and commissions. We have a lot of volunteers that sit on boards and commissions from Parks and Rec, senior centers, et cetera, et cetera. I was thinking that we discussed that individuals or boards and commissions that have final decisions that don't come to the council. Those were the individuals that we're going to include. I'm not sure if, I'm not sure how many boards and commissions we have. We probably have over a hundred or so, right?
Mayor, Councilman Noakowski, I think we determined it was a little less than a hundred, maybe on the order of seventy-ish. I don't remember exactly the final determination. But to the point, to your point, we have not had a chance to determine how many of those have so-called final decision-making authority. But what we did is we went back and looked at other jurisdictions that included boards and commissions, and it was pretty much all or nothing. And here's probably why, at least we speculate this is the reason why. In many cases, a border commission can make a decision that's then reviewable by you, either on an appeal or a direct review. But sometimes people live with the decision, and so the decision of the border commission, though recommendation only if appealed, then becomes final. And so I think that the thought process might be elsewhere, that you either make all boards and commissions subject to it. Remember, it's not a violation for a member of a border commission to be lobbied by someone who's not complying with lobbying ordinance. It's a violation by the lobbyist. So the border commission member then makes a decision, it's tentative, subject to your review, but if not appealed, it becomes final. So again, the best practice seemed to be it's all or nothing. You could, however, decide to make it only to those boards that have absolutely final decision-making authority. We could do that. We just have time to sort through all the boards and commissions between the subcommittee meeting and now, and come up with a list of what we speculate is just a few that don't have, or that have final decision-making authority, not subject to a council review.
And then the other thing we talked about in the subcommittee was the executive staff and department heads. A lot of times, they come in with recommendations to council members, and we take those recommendations at heart. So that's where that all came about, and I think that's something that we should enforce. What else is there? Besides that, I think I like the recommendations. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Vice Mayor?
One of the things that, the logic that I had, or that we all discussed behind this ordinance was that this is a city former, city manager, former government. And I'm glad with the definition of the city official, because in being a city, city manager, former government, executives and others in the department heads have, people go to them to influence them on a decision. And so I commend you for including all these pieces. The same thing goes with boards and commissions, because boards, certain boards and commissions have some authority, and they can be influenced by others on making a decision. And so I think that's kind of the way the lens or the eye that I, after discussing with several people, look at this, as who can come and influence somebody that is going to make a decision either in that department or to the city council, just because the way we're formed. There are some boards that even have more authority than the city council, and so I think by having boards and commissions across the board, it eliminates some of this influence, or not influence, it's just being documented. It's not necessarily eliminated, it's documenting. And I think that's really where we're getting at, is documenting who is, who is talking to who, and how we move forward on whatever item it is. So I commend you on that. I'm still a little confused about the principally compensated, and I'm going to give an example. And maybe it probably, it'll go with all our other examples. I'm a CEO of a company, and I have people within my department that are registered lobbyists. I happened to come across someone or the elected official and was talking about an item that possibly would go in front, or a property, or something. Does that CEO then have to register as a lobbyist?
Mayor, Vice Mayor Pastor, if the word principally were left in, the answer would be no. If the word principally is taken out, and there were an ask, the key part of a lobbying communication is an ask. The lobbyist on behalf of a client asks you to take certain action. If there were an ask in that, and the word principally were out, under those circumstances, it would probably be best for the CEO to register. But here's the key, we don't enforce against the CEO if it comes to the attention by virtue of a complaint that's made that the CEO engaged in lobbying, then the first request that's made is, "Would you please register? You have fifteen days." And so none of those progressive sanctions start until we've given a person the opportunity to register. And at that time, the CEO comes forward and says, "I'm really not a lobbyist, the communication wasn't that way." He may not have, or she may not have to register in the end. The key is, is that we start by trying to persuade compliance as opposed to sanction for non-compliance.
So if we remove principally, then the cure would come into play?
Yes, Mayor.
And then at that moment, it would be determined, yes or no, they don't need to register or not? That's where, that's where the protection is.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, that's correct. You're right.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Mayor, got one more question.
All right, Councilman Noakowski, please.
Thank you, Mayor. We really don't have anything about staffers where basically council, mayor, staff, city managers, executive staff, department heads, after they resign, after they retire, after they leave the city of Phoenix, can we actually put in writing, when can they come back and lobby? And I like to see it not just at a year, but maybe extend it beyond a year.
Mayor, Councilman Noakowski, that's governed in part by state law, and why don't you let us see if we can, I don't happen to have the state statute with me here today, so I am not able to conversantly report it back to you. If you would allow us to look at that a little more carefully, and then we'll brief you on that issue.
So if it can go up to two to three years, that'd be great.
Okay.
Thank you.
We understand that.
Mayor, just as a quick follow-up on that too, we just had a sidebar conversation. I mean, the federal government's now five years, and I don't think anything, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, I know a little, I know a little bit about that law too, but I think it says it cannot be a year, it doesn't say you can't be beyond a year. I think you can always extend it further, but that's something to look into, and I think that's something you should come back to us with. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman, do you have a question or comment?
Depending on where we land on the definition of lobbyists, I do think we should keep in mind economic development activities. So sometimes we are trying to recruit a company to come to our community, and we might make an offer, and then they might say, "Can you change it in this way?" And there's sometimes a high degree of secrecy, such that they have even a code name, and we don't even use the name of the business. So we just would want to make sure that we can still compete in that particular venue, and that we wouldn't be outing people in the middle of these negotiations.
Clearly, we can ensure that that eventuality doesn't occur.
All right, thank you very much. Any additional comments or questions by members of the council on this issue? Councilman Pastor?
I would like to make a friendly amendment if we could take out principally.
All right, so it sounds like that Councilwoman Williams has accepted the friendly amendment, so principally will be removed from the motion. So all other elements of Councilwoman Williams' motion retains. Does the second person who made the second okay with a friendly amendment to remove principally?
And I guess I-
Yes, Mayor.
Councilman Valenzuela, you're okay with removal of principally?
I am.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman.
If we were going to remove that, I think we should look at the federal definition for what triggers, so that we can-
Ms. Breedlove.
Mayor Stanton, Councilwoman Gallego, if we go back to the trigger, I actually have that in there, it's really hard to compare the federal statute to ours, because it's so much more complicated, and it puts people in different categories. But at the very bottom, I cover the federal compensation of over $3,000 for three months, makes more than one contact, and spends more than 20% of their time in three months on lobbying, on behalf of a client. And it's, so that is their trigger for registration, but their facts and their lobbying efforts are much different than ours, so it's kind of comparing apples and oranges, but that is what their trigger is.
So this would, assuming this passes, this would make our definition consistent with the state of Arizona, San Diego, San Antonio, Philadelphia, and Chicago. Is that accurate? Thank you much. Councilman Waring?
Correct.
Thank you. So if it passes without the word principally?
Mayor Stanton, Councilman Waring, correct.
Because when I had my briefing, I don't think that was in there.
It hadn't been brought to us at that point.
So to the extent maybe, I was at fault for the word principally, which I never used, but I did give you some examples, one that, a couple have been mentioned here, the person who works for a contractor who's having problems with the planning department, or impossible, I know, Alan, if you're listening, but if something comes up like that, that's not really fair to them, they're not thinking they're a lobbyist, they're just having an issue and they call. Another one would be an HOA, not a board member, because you told me those people would be exempt, because they're not being compensated, but I got two emails that I was sitting here today from HOA, like staff. And so they are getting paid in a way to sort of contact me, to let me know about issues. But I'm okay with taking the principally out of it, I'm okay with all of this, because of what Brad said about the 15-day period. It would only be somebody who's recalcitrant. We're not charging any money, right? There's no new reports. The people that I was concerned about aren't, you know, they're not throwing fundraisers or anything like that. There are no new reports in this at all, right? So it's stuff that they should have been doing anyway, maybe people weren't, there was no sanction. It sounds like from our briefing, nobody had gone back and checked to see if active lobbyists have been not filing those reports. And it sounds like this has been, all been going on for a long, long time, and no reporter or anybody else had ever noticed, so, until recently, so.
And because of Councilwoman Williams' suggestion, there'll be a kiosk to make it as easy as possible to register.
Take away all excuses, but you're also not going to unintentionally snare some civilian who is not trying to do anything wrong. They don't know, they just want a street fixed or something, because that, to me, wouldn't be fair. They're suddenly getting a fine, hauled before the ex, they could ruin somebody's life, or certainly their occupation. None of that is going to happen. It's no new reports, it's simply sanctions on actual lobbyists, and if there's any doubt, a person has a 15-day period to just go on their computer and basically sign their name, and that's it. If we do by taking out the principally, which I think is needlessly confusing, I think doing the federal would be needlessly confusing, you know, they would have a chance to rectify that and not be hauled before the ex commission. Is that a fair summary? I know it was convoluted, but.
Mayor Stanton, Councilman Waring, yes.
Okay. That is both fair and convoluted.
It was convoluted. I jumped around, I apologize, but.
Any additional comments or questions before we vote? All right, so Councilwoman Williams' motion is the one on the table. Councilwoman Valenzuela has seconded it. Without any further comments, roll call.
Councilman DeCiccio.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gallego.
Yes.
Councilman Noakowski. Councilwoman Stark. Councilman Valenzuela. Councilman Waring. Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Pastor.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes, so the motion passes unanimously, and there be no further business before the city council for today's policy session. Today's meeting is adjourned.